All right, good morning ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town Election and Planning Commission meeting. This is our normal monthly meeting being held at Town Hall at 8:00 AM Wednesday, October 20th, 2021. This meeting is being broadcast live. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the Town's Information Channel 1301 several times during the week. It will also be available on the Town's website. I'm Frank Berry, your Chairman of the Town Election and Planning Commission. Other planning commission present are?
Good morning, I'm Jarrett Harrelson.
Good morning, I'm Jeannie Michaels.
Good morning, I'm Chris Brownlee.
Good morning, I'm Brian Amick.
Good morning, I'm Joe Robertson.
Good morning, I'm Brett Poole, Town Administrator.
Good morning, Brad Cunningham, Town Attorney.
All right. At this time I'll ask Jeannie Michaels to lead us in the location.
Loves pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. In your son's name, amen.
At this time, please join me in a pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now call the meeting to order. Do you have any deletions to the agenda? I do have one recommendation is I'd like to move item number three to number one, being that the applicant has already been before this body and worked with staff to bring this project back to us. Do I need to take a motion on that?
Ask for any objections.
Any objections?
No.
All right. Next item of business is approving of the minutes you have before you. Motion to approve? Motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. No public presentations, no old business, new business, sketch plan approval for Town Home Subdivision to be located on Tom Corley Place.
Kiesler Family Properties is requesting sketch plan approval for a 35-unit Town Home project located on 7.6 acres on Tom Corley Place. The allowable density of residential development is determined by the classification of the street providing access to the property. Tom Corley Place is classified as a local road which allows up to eight units per acre. Proposed development has 4.5 units. Properties with PR2 zoning do not have a minimum lot size as long as the homes can meet the setback and driveway requirements. This project appears to meet the setback requirements. It's unclear whether each unit can meet the driveway requirements although the plan does include 24 overflow spaces. I believe they've accounted for that, but we don't know specifically until we get building plans for each unit because parking is based on how many bedrooms it is.
The Town's land development ordinance requires at least 15% of the area to be dedicated open space with at least 50% of the open space being active recreation space. Using this calculation, the project needs 1.1 acres of open space and 0.57 acres of active open space. The submitted plan provides 2.57 acres of open space with 0.73 acres of active open space that includes a play area, dog park, and fitness trail around the detention pond. Access will be obtained through a single entrance from Tom Corley Place. Plan also shows a location for a future road that the town is considering installing. This road location traverses a portion of the Green Space to Green Space A and that has been removed from the open space calculations. That was one of the items that was discussed last month, or I guess it was August. The developers also agreed to complete the installation of the turn lane on Sunset Boulevard in front of the Lidl Grocery Store. The project appears to meet all zoning and land development requirements and addresses the concerns raised by the commission during their August review.
All righty. Does anybody here from the applicant need, like to say anything?
If you can answer any questions.
All right, come on up. Just state your name and...
I'm David Parr with Power Engineering. Did the sketch last time we were supposed to meet with the traffic.
What did y'all work out as far as the turn lane or coming up from there?
Starting at Lidl, there's a little turning lane there. We agreed to complete that all the way to Tom Corley Road.
Couple of questions, thank you for, one question I guess for completing the sidewalk connectivity, but one of the questions that came up last time was also, see you got the walking trail, the last time it was dirt gravel, we were looking for more of a permanent solution. What exactly is identified for the...
Well, we added a detail to the plan that shows us five feet of it's going to be concrete and then three and a half feet on either side will be grassed.
Anybody else got any questions for the...
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend approval.
All right, I have a motion. Second. I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you again for working with staff and addressing the concerns that within our ordinances as well as our concerns with the traffic and the issues that we're having to deal with in a growing town. All right. Now number one is number two, which is a site plan approval for renovation in addition to 100 Snell Grove Road. John?
I think you can hear David's name from previous, you've been here a lot. JE Capital Holdings has submitted a site plan to renovate and expand a building located at 100 Snell Grove Road. It appears that this plan may meet zoning requirements, but it's not possible to confirm that based on the submittal. Some of the needed information that has been omitted from the submittal to confirm that it meets zoning requirements include the intended use of the property, the total square footage of the project, a dumpster pad location if appropriate, and the buffer and setback dimensions. We met with this particular developer prior to this showing up on your agenda and there was discussions of various types of office uses. I think aspirationally they mentioned that their highest use would be a medical office, but they don't know, so I can't confirm for you that it meets zoning until we know what it is. The square footage of the addition is shown on the plan, but the square footage of the existing building that they're adding on to is not on the plan, so I can't tell you what the total square footage will be. Additionally, Snell Grove Road is classified as a limited local road. Limited local road is described in the zoning ordinance as a street that contains a location or design flaw that limits traffic movements or volumes. The conditions of the problem should be unlikely to be improved. Access to this type of street will be limited. Access to the project occurs from Snell Grove Road. The Town's Long Range Transportation Improvement Plan, or LTIP, recommends improving Snell Grove Road at both the Park Road and Old Chapin Road intersections. The applicant requested commission review of this project to determine the appropriate transportation approvals needed for its approval. Their representatives here from JJE Capital can answer any questions, or Randy can go into more detail about the traffic improvements on Snell Grove.
Let me get Randy up to give his, so we got all the staff comments, then we'll get to the applicant. Randy, you mind coming up?
Randy Edwards, Transportation Director.
Can you shed some light on to the Snell Grove Road and traffic issues that we're already faced at those two intersections?
Yeah, in 2017, Town Council chose to evaluate intersections within the Town of Lexington and develop what's called the Local Transportation Improvement Plan. That identified 30 locations throughout town that were potentially would be impacted by future development, so they were basically underdesigned or underperforming. So Snell Grove Road in its entirety was identified as a problematic road because it's classified as a limited local road. It's identified as a limited local road and that its width varied, the curves and whatnot did not meet local standard, so it was simply identified. And then the intersections at both Old Chapin and at Park Road were identified as in need of improvement. So during discussions with the developer, we brought this to their attention, but there was two ongoing projects that we felt like if they were to participate in filling a gap, yeah, you've seen Sandpiper project, which was the Town Homes at Flight Deck. So that project was extended additional number of feet to reach the driveway of Conley Builders. So that's farther than what they would normally be required. They were also requested and complied with building the road, the widening to full three-lane width. In that way, future could connect three full lanes with a twiddle, turn lanes at Snell Grove could be accommodated in the future. There's another project at Lakeland Apartments replacing the entire apartment complex, and that project would have just extended back to just beyond Snell Grove Road with its taper. So in discussions with this developer, we said in lieu of Snell Grove Road improvements, we would ask that they participate with filling that gap, which was around 100-foot full width and then 150 or so foot tapered. But it's my understanding based upon plans submittal that that is no longer a need, that the apartment complex has closed the gap. And so it looks like Old Chapin Road will be improved from the Sandpiper entrance at Flight Deck all the way through to Lakeland Apartments, which takes us back to the LTIP project that was identified in 2017. So that's the history of staff's communication with the developer. So we would now be looking at what improvements on Snell Grove Road would mitigate the traffic and additional trips that are going to come there.
That's what I was going to ask you, that's where the need would be on either side. It's still early.
All right, any further questions for Randy? Thank you for explaining that. Is there a representative from JJ you need to would like to come up and...
John Stevens with Crescent Engineering, I'm the civil engineer. I also have Julian here, actually the owner. I was going to speak real quick, that is not the latest site plan. John, you had called me and we talked about, you know, you want to setbacks added and square footage. We revised that and sent it back. With that being said, now that the improvements have been made to Old Cherokee, we were already, that's what he was going to be required to do, why are we discussing this right now, I guess?
Well...
But I'm gonna go ahead and let Julian do his spill and then...
I got one question, I guess, for Randy, because since you brought up, why are we discussing it? I believe the LTIP discusses both sides of, not just Old Chapin?
Yes. So the details of the LTIP were presented when we first met with the developer, and because we had this gap in the other two Old Chapin projects, we felt since they are on the corner of Old Chapin and Snell Grove, that we could forego the Snell Grove in exchange for filling that gap. And, you know, they didn't want to do that, which is their prerogative, but we, you know, had to continue working with the other developers and so that gap has been closed, which takes us back to the LTIP. You know what I mean? So it isn't that the LTIP went away, it was in lieu of.
Right.
Does that make sense? And the LTIP has, the LTIP meaning the Snell Grove project has, there's numerous issues on that road that begin with classification.
So when the extra 100-foot gap was absorbed by Lakeland, may I understand this, is that the Snell Grove now becomes an issue that developer seeking approval for this project has to address?
Right, because I have nothing to say that, you know, had they said yes, we'll fill that gap, we could have, you know, brought it to y'all and said, in exchange for Snell Grove, that the bigger issue was the gap on Old Chapin. Going from three lanes to two lanes, back to three lanes, you know what I mean, in 150 feet is not practical.
Right. Okay. All right.
Good morning, how are y'all doing today? My name's Julian Wilson, I am the owner of the property. Grew up here in Lexington County. Y'all's presence on this board is a community service, that's what you do for a community service. My background, I was an Army officer, signal officer, logistics officer. I've been corporate site selection developer for about 15 years and I've transitioned over into corporate real estate. My career, I haven't sat on boards, but in my West Columbia and Lexington areas where I'm from, I like to find the most blighted ugly property I can possibly find. I try to do this once a year, and I turn it into something to be proud of. Snell Grove property in question is between my house and Rush's, which I often eat. And I drive by, there's two reasons why I wanted to do the redevelopment of this property and make it look aesthetically pleasing. One was my wife told me I couldn't do it, she said it was too ugly. And then the other was, I said, there's good bones to the structure and I think I can make my community better. So whenever I came up with the idea of doing this, we put down the presentation and we discussed in the meeting that medical office would be very likely the highest and best use of the property. This is the former JC hut, it had a, it was pretty much a big wide open room, concrete building. And I was very surprised when we went into the meeting that the proposal wasn't, had about 90 feet of frontage, but no access, no functioning access because of house blocks on Old Cherokee. The proposal was for some 275 feet of widening to, I don't know, eight ringer widening, but what I heard was 275 feet of relaning the road that I don't really have access off of. And I was very surprised, and I was, I would like for it to be looked at if the staff had the power to force me to widen that road. And that's why we're here right now, because that's, the widening of the road would be greater than the entire cost of the property, project cost. And if that's the case, then that thing would be better served as a house than a form of development. I just don't think that's what's best for the community. It's not what I do for a living, this is what I do for as a labor of love, back to the community. I've probably done 15 such projects in West Columbia and Lexington over the years, and I enjoy it. I take a great sense of pride of driving down the road and looking at something that was once blighted and going, man, I've done something for the community. They don't always make money, but they always make the community look better. Appreciate y'all's consideration. I saw that there's some gaps of dumpster pad and setbacks, I believe those have been updated on the most recent plan. I don't think we have the most recent plan, I don't know why, but pretty much all the simple questions have been answered. Dumpster pad, if you're, depends on your use, if you're going to need to have a dumpster pad, if you're a small trash user, dumpster pad is impractical. And I don't think that's indicative of that, I could be wrong, that's not my trade. I very much appreciate y'all's time today and would love to turn what I consider to be a blighted property, probably the ugliest property in the Town of Lexington in my opinion, into something that would be proud of.
All righty. With that said, you mentioned the latest site plan, if this is not the latest submittal or if this is not the correct site plan, why are we even here today for this?
We didn't notice it until it was posted on the board.
This is what we were sent, this is what was sent out by our staff to us.
Mr. Chairman, the primary question about the site plan, we can work on the dimensions, like I said, I think it appears to meet zoning, but if you don't know what the use is, you can't confirm that.
That was my, that was where I get my next question, was if we don't know the use, we can't make a conscious decision as a planning commission, because we take our recommendation from staff, which if you heard in the previous project, they came in, we had questions, they worked with staff for a two-month period and brought it back to this body for consideration. And based on what I have in front of me, which I would consider an incomplete package, we're left with two options. I'll let you withdraw or we can vote on this. It's probably not going to be a favorable vote at the condition that is, we're presented to us right here this morning.
In the meeting that we had with the staff, it was discussed that medical office would be the use, but I had it first, the engineer told me how to arrange. But on record, it was deferred to as a medical office, but I don't know if it made it to the plan, but I had it first.
So I guess the question is, are you saying it's incomplete because it didn't have the use, or is it incomplete because those items are not on there?
Items that are on here, and we take our guidance from our staff. They tell us that it's incomplete and...
But how do you even accept an incomplete to go to planning commission again?
You requested the plan to come to the planning commission.
Those items, for one thing, are minor items that we have addressed and sent. So at that point, are we not going to talk about the widening part of this?
We're not going to talk about, we're going to talk about what was submitted to us, which there's four items listed and a use is not listed, for us to make a conscious decision of how we're going to go about zoning the property and classifying the road. So we're left with two options. We can withdraw it, work with staff to come back to this body with a commission, or we can vote on this and it would likely not be a favorable vote.
If you withdraw, it allows you to go back to staff and...
Absolutely, I completely get it. And the other thing is, in my, I'm in corporate real estate, I've been before the boards in every major municipality in the state of South Carolina, so I very much appreciate that the opportunity, we will withdraw. I ask that we get a fair, fair look from staff whenever we do submit and we'll come back to you and very much appreciate y'all's time today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Staff will work with you, as you saw in the previous application, we've worked with several of them throughout the years, so.
We appreciate it.
And we definitely want the area improved, absolutely. So I mean, that's a win for the community, so.
All right, so would you mind letting us know which direction you want to go?
I believe you are.
He said, he did.
You're withdrawing?
Okay.
And we will, we will meet, work with staff and resubmit.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Again, thank y'all very much for y'all's time.
All right. Karen, you got that?
Got it.
All right, next item of business, site plan approval for Freddie's Frozen Custards at 111 Swarts Road. John?
For the record, the site plan that is in the package was the one submitted by your attorney.
Okay.
Brett Riker has submitted a site plan to construct a Freddie's Frozen Custard on the corner of Swarts Road and East Main Street. The project consists of, excuse me, consists of a 2,400-square-foot fast food restaurant with a drive-through. Access to the site will be obtained from Swarts Road. Assuming the appropriate approval is obtained from the Army Corps of Engineers, the project appears to meet zoning requirements except for the preservation corridor special overlay that requires a 20-foot buffer on the East Main Street side of the property, doesn't appear to have been accounted for. On this side of the project area, a portion of the detention pond appears to be located within the buffer area. During a staff review of the project, concerns were raised about traffic impact this project will have on the intersection of Swarts Road and East Main Street. Several options were discussed with the applicant to potentially mitigate these impacts. In lieu of including any of these options on the plan, the applicant requested the commission review the project.
All righty. Randy, this is a good day for you. Have you had any review and input with the applicant on the traffic issues that we know exist at this intersection, and how have they been remediated?
Yes, and no. So yes, in that we had a discussion with the applicant and explained what the, you know, the, I mean, that traffic is obviously our number one issue and this is a problematic intersection in and of itself in its current condition. And what would they be doing to mitigate their impact? Basically, we've got, nothing was proposed as the mitigating, you know, I was told that they had met with DOT and that DOT liked it. So however, and so that it's clear, this intersection is not identified in the LTIP, okay? And the reason it's not in the LTIP, it was discussed during the development of the LTIP, but we didn't come up with a, what is a good mitigation at this location? So it does come down to what would that site be used for as to what, you know, those mitigations would need to be. There's a challenging site distance at that location, there's a high left turn volume going onto Swarts Road, and, you know, and so we did actually suggest some, you know, possible mitigation factors and gave the developer, you know, a to-do list in that at least seek, you know, some guidance or some information regarding the apartment complex property that has a retaining wall and some bushes and all that stuff that is, you know, if you're exiting Swarts Road. You know, I didn't really see any real, generally any real problems with the use. It's more the already what's going on there and then you're going to introduce a fast food restaurant at that location, so.
Randy, like with the site distance, I'm assuming the retention wall is one of the issues about the site distance, and then the turn lanes, would those items and then others be addressed like in a traffic impact study?
They could be, there wasn't one done here. I don't know if DOT did not request one or did not ask for one specifically, because we were simply, we like to give the developer an opportunity to simply put those funds into concrete and pavement. into concrete and pavement, you know? So there were some mitigating factors suggested, suggested, but nothing came back as a thing that's, you know, here's what we think we can make happen, here's what we learned from the, uh, neighbor, neighboring property. Because it's, so the site distance is, is, is technically meets standard.
Okay.
Okay? The problem is, is that there's enough going on there that you have to kind of put yourself out there to get that site distance.
Okay.
So DOT has done some, what we would consider to be temporary, um, solutions, nothing permanent, and there's no PD here to attest to this, but we get right turn, or right-hand bypassers all the time that drive right through the paint markings, you know? So it's a problematic little intersection, and that's why I said when we started our meeting with the developer was, okay, this is an okay spot, but what are you gonna do about, about this? You can't make it worse. And we felt like, without any mitigation, that it certainly was gonna be made worse.
Anybody else for Randy?
I mean, part of this body here is to go beyond DOT, and what they might say, and, and, you know, we know what traffic problems we have a little deeper, so that's why we make these discussions with staff and everything.
All right. Is anyone here from the applicant wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. I'm Harry Dixon, with the law firm of Kausen Time Robinson. I want to introduce Brett Rikard, who's the applicant, his entity, is the one that submitted this request for approval. He's gonna give you a little background about the project, and we've got our engineer here, John Stevens, that can speak to some of these engineering issues more closely.
Hi, I'm Brett Rikard. I'm the franchise owner for Freddie's here in Columbia. We own the Florence Market in Augusta, Georgia as well. I own and operate four stores here in the Midlands right now. Would love for our fifth one to be here in Lexington. We are mitigating the wetlands as we speak, and do not foresee any issues with the Army Corps of Engineers. Our project meets zoning requirements, and if we must adjust the pond to meet the buffer requir, requirements, we will do so. During the pre-development meeting, it was voiced by Randy that he believed there would be an impact near the intersection of our development, and we just want to politely disagree with that statement. His suggestions would cost any private developer upwards of an additional $200,000 that was not budgeted for. We are asking permission for our current site plan to be approved, so that me, so that we may continue to develop a Freddie's and finally bring the concept to the town of Lexington. Additionally, Swartz Road and East Main Street are state-owned roads. Uh, it is important to note that SC DOT does not require any additional road improvements to move forward with this project. We will also be bringing seventy-five-plus jobs, tax revenues, great hospitality, burgers and custard into the community. If I can answer any questions, along with my engineer.
Are y'all opposed to getting a traffic impact study?
Not opposed, it's just never been thrown out there.
Yeah, I, I mean, just to clarify some of the, I, I do recognize this is a state road, and that DOT's giving you guys the thumbs up, so that, that's a big hurdle, I guess, but the, the traffic, I mean, traffic is the only thing that people in our community talk about. I mean, everybody loves the schools, everybody loves the community on the whole, it's just traffic, and so that's just, um, that's a hot, it's a hot road right there.
Yeah.
Um, and the, the sight line thing does bother me a little bit, just because I, I've actually drove by there over the weekend, and it, and it, to me, it seems obvious, and I'm a layman, and I was going through there without, you know, your, your property being developed.
Oh, yeah.
I just, that's what I'm, where my head's at on it right now.
Like Randy stated, it's not a hotspot, it's not under, you know, I'm gonna pay impact fees, and my fees aren't going towards that intersection.
Yeah.
So if you guys are gonna make me develop, is what you guys are kinda saying, make me do road improvements, a road that I don't own, and a road that you don't own, so...
In the development community, we, there's a lot of us that have to do that. Me being one of them, I know all about it, so... I hear what you're saying, but it is required when you're impacting the traffic, especially at a high-volume intersection like this, and it's a cut-through from Highway One to Highway Six daily. And the improvements that were made out there, Randy, when was that done, the restriping? Two years ago, three years ago? About two years ago. It's helped, but has not alleviated the problem. Now you're thinking of bringing a fast-food restaurant with a drive-thru, stacking, parking, at a high-volume intersection, we, we need to address the traffic issue at that point.
Yeah.
And that's what this body is...
For a Freddie's, that's not considered a high-volume traffic intersection.
For the town of Lexington, it is.
Have you, have you, um, looked at any other, just out of curiosity, any other place for the drive-in, the drive-through?
Uh, we placed the entrance where DOT asked us to place it. Um, if you look at that stack, there's no better way to have, I mean, I compiled twenty, thirty cars in that back there. I can't do that any other way.
I've got a concern, as it relates to the queuing, and as Randy mentioned, this is a, a very busy intersection. I know you said that it's not, but I think arguably most of your traffic is gonna be coming to and from US One, as opposed to coming directly from Swartz. So that's gonna increase those turning movements onto Swartz. What's your spacing from your driveway to US One? It's kinda hard to read on the plans.
I remember, I believe DOT said put the driveway here, basically. I think it's one seventy, so around here, one seventy-five, one seventy...
Can you please state your name again for this project?
John Stevens, uh, with the Wood Company on this one, because I sold Crescent Engineering.
My concern would be folks exiting Swartz Road onto US One, if they queue up back across your driveway, hundred sixty, hundred seventy feet, that's six or seven vehicles, I would say. Randy, is that reasonable, is what happens out there? Um, so if they queue up and block your driveway, and then you've got someone else who wants to enter your site and make a left-hand turn, they can't get in, so then they're gonna back up traffic onto US One, and then it just becomes a whole mess. I think without some sort of queuing or traffic study, it's hard for us to, to make a decision on whether improvements are needed or not. We just don't have enough information at this point.
I would like to ask the, um, planning commission to, basically, address some, I've, I get questions from both, both these clients, and just having, they came in at the exact same time. Um, what gives the town, you know, the authority, if you look at the zoning ordinance, to question, you know, these traffic, either traffic impact study, or improvements, or, or likewise? You know, what's the mechanism that allows the town to say, we want you to do this? That's what the zoning ordinance is for.
I ca, I can't speak for the, the, the whole body, but me personally, I was just trying to get clarity around some of the mitigating, what, what could be mitigated. I mean, I wasn't in the meeting with Randy, I don't know how well things may have been articulated, I just know that in a traffic study, those variables rise to the top, and then they can be addressed, one way or the other. I don't know if we have the authority or not, it was just for my clarity, that's all.
I'd be glad to speak to that.
Can you do it?
Yes, sir. So the, um, the zoning ordinance says very clearly that a traffic impact study can be required of any project, and that's, that's up to the approving authority, which is either staff or planning commission. Generally, it's allowed for planning commission to ask for that. And the Comprehensive Planning Act of South Carolina makes it clear that decisions based on public safety can be, or public safety can be used as a decision factor in zoning decisions. So that has always extended to traffic, and traffic safety is public safety, so that's the answer to your question.
So, so both the zoning ordinance and that second, which one of y'all really use? I mean, I mean, in, in...
Using, using both, you know? The Comprehensive Planning Act of South Carolina. We've, um, there, there was a project that was rejected because of public safety in the town of Lexington that went all the way to the Supreme Court and won a number of years ago. So we, we feel very strongly that that authority is very well supported by this body.
Okay. I will say that one section that's been cited in the zoning ordinance is subdivision-related, but that's the first I've heard of that.
Yep.
I think onsite as well with the, the drive-thru, it's like the end of it kinda feeds right into the, the driveway entrance coming off of Swartz. It's hard to, hard to gauge that as well, in case the drive-thru backs up into the driveway, and then causes more backup onto Swartz.
That all, I mean, it meets all the DOT requirements, you know, as far as the throat length and everything, for that same, for that reason. I would assume the DOT's got those guidelines and requirements, you know, to address that situation.
We don't typically have thirty-plus cars sitting on the back of it.
Yeah.
Might, I mean, the opening week, yes, but it's, it, you know, if I have to hire a police officer, I'd have to do it for, so, it's just kind of part of the...
Yeah, I just, you see it driving around, if there's a, a popular restaurant, and the drive-thru backs up into the road, and all of a sudden you're coming up on traffic in the right lane, and you gotta swerve or slam on brakes, and not hit them. We don't want that to be occurring here.
One other concern that was brought up during, uh, John's introduction of the project, is assuming we, you obtain approval from the Corps of Engineers, you're still not gonna meet the preservation corridor's overlay district buffer. How do you plan to address that?
As far as that, as far as the, you talking about along the frontage?
Wherever your twenty-foot buffer on East Main Street side of the property.
The detention pond, you know, we can, they've already been before the appearance board, and, and that's gotta, we, there's factors we have to address there, too, but for the most part, the deten, detention pond's out, but we got such a steep slope off of that road, that our berm has to go into the buffer, basically. Um, not sure if there's really a way around that, I mean, if you gotta fill that area, it's the same thing as putting a berm there. So that, we can make sure the pond itself, if it, when it ponds up, it's out of that buffer, yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but a buffer is a buffer that cannot be disturbed. Am I correct?
The purpose of the preservation corridor overlay is to preserve right-of-way for future road widening potential projects. If you put a detention pond in there, then you, when you do any sort of road improvement, you've got to move it, so that was the concern.
All right. Any further questions for that? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition?
No, opposition, I'll speak at all.
State your name, and for the record.
Good morning, I'm Jason Falls. I'm the seller's agent on this property, um, and just wanna pass along some information from the folks that have inquired about it, and I've dealt with in the past year, um, you know, talking with them. Most every folk, uh, group of folks that have contacted us have all but immediately fell back under contract, off of contract. Um, they get in to seeing what's, uh, involved with the Army Corps of Engineers and the wetlands, and they immediately jump. Uh, this is a piece of property, uh, that we've got willing people that are willing to develop, willing to do something with it, or it could be a potential property that sits like this forever. They're looking to bring jobs and income to the area, and, and add a great restaurant, you know, on top of that. Um, you know, I just wanna express that these guys are really trying, they're really doing their best, and they're doing way more than anybody else has been willing to do. And, and, you know, it sounds like to me, there, there may be a few challenges, but those challenges would be with anybody that come along, and, and nobody's even been willing to get even close to this far, so...
Okay, thank you. I just wanna add that this body is tasked with traffic, dealing with the traffic issues that we have in Lexington. We all live here, I'm not sure if you all live here or not, we drive it every day, we live it every day. And one of the first things we're gonna look at on every project we do is making sure that everybody has worked with our traffic engineer to come up with the best possible solution for your project. So, again, that's all I wanna say about that, but do I have a motion, or any further discussion?
I'd make a motion to have the developer do a traffic study, and then come back to staff with that, and present it, you know, with that study, and, um...
All righty, um, I guess the traffic study's gonna determine the traffic improvements that will be required, and to work with you, Randy, and staff to bring us back a plan, correct? That functions. So, to go back to what we previously did on the last application, do we move forward with requiring a traffic study, modifications to the plan, or do we allow them to withdraw it, do the traffic study and bring back the plan, that is acceptable through the, the staff?
I would say they, they can withdraw it and also address the buffer issue.
Because what we need to do is, we need to approve, or, correct me if I'm wrong, we need to approve or deny what was submitted to us today, correct?
That's correct.
So...
I think, uh, the approach of withdrawing and then resubmitting is probably the best, given a couple of issues hanging out there.
Okay.
But I think we'll draw.
Okay. All right. And what I ask, is, strongly ask, is y'all diligently work with staff to resolve these issues that we have, because traffic is a, at that location is a very, very hot topic. Hot button. All right. All right.
Mr. Chairman, you have a motion to require the traffic impact study that's...
That's right, we need to get rid of that, so you wanna withdraw your motion?
I'll make a, withdraw the motion.
Well, are they required to have the traffic impact study or not?
Well, yes, they will be.
Okay, are you gonna pass that motion, or are you not?
Oh, yeah, let's do that.
All right.
So, we have a motion and a second on requiring them a traffic impact study, but we're not voting on the project today, correct? All those in favor, please raise your right hand, unanimous. That is all of our new business. Thank you, gentlemen, for working with, uh, staff and getting this possibly across the finish line.
Thank you, Chairman.
So, all right. Any other business? November the fourth is our tailgate oyster commissions, board and commissions oyster roast. Hopefully you all be, can be there.
I think I have it on my other calendar, November eighth?
Fourth.
Fourth.
Okay. And what time?
Five.
Five thirty.
It's the amphitheater.
I was told invitations are in the mail, you should be getting them shortly.
Ah.
So... All right, no po, public comments, no news media?
Mr. Chairman, I would...
Would you like to?
Yes, sir. Um, I would, um, remind everybody that we have an election for town council, um, that's gonna be held November the second, Tuesday. Um, there are three seats open and four candidates, so I encourage everybody to, um, to come out and vote. Um, Friday, October the twenty-second, at the Ice House Amphitheater, we'll have Fall of Palooza, which is, uh, um, rock tribute bands. Uh, Friday, October the twenty-ninth, Tokyo Joe will celebrate their twenty-fifth anniversary with a concert benefit charity. You can go to icehouseamphitheater.com for more info. You mentioned the boards and commissions oyster roast on the fourth, on the, um, November seventh is the Veterans Day Parade, and if it so happens that it rains, the makeup day for that will be November the fourteenth. Of course, that'll be through downtown. And then I encourage everybody to look at December second and fifth for the Snowball Festival Downtown, which is our Christmas, um, festival. There will be a two-day craft fair, Christmas tree lighting, carnival, movies, parade, and more. If you haven't heard of our downtown scavenger, Santa scavenger hunt, which we did last year, we'll be doing that again. Follow us on Facebook. In December, December, there'll be ornaments placed in downtown businesses, and you match the ornaments to the business for a chance to win gift certificates and swag from the town. Thank you.
Swag, huh?
Swag.
Where's all our town shirts? I didn't, I didn't expect you to... I didn't, I didn't expect you to say that.
Alright, hearing nothing else, do I have a motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, we are adjourned. Thank you for watching Town Election and Planning Commission Act. This meeting was held at Town Hall at eight AM Wednesday, October twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. A recording of this meeting will be aired several times during the week on the town's information channel, cable thirteen-oh-one, and it can be viewed online at the town's website. On behalf of the Town of Lexington and Planning Commission and staff, I wish you a good day.